Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. And we seem to have a full house tonight, so I'm going to ask that if you will, please hold your conversations. Jack, that includes you. Hold your conversations and let us go through with our business. We appreciate that very much. So at this time, Mr. I'm going to ask Mr. Generalody, do we have a foreman present?
Yes, sir, we do.
Foreman present, I now declare this meeting open. And at this time, I would like to have our Minister Max Caver. If you would please come and do an invocation for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff and guests. I'm ahead for the Ministry of Health Association of Pickens County. We appreciate the opportunity that we have become in working the council with prayer. So let's pray. Our Father, as you know, it's a cold rainy night in Georgia. But on the inside, it's full of light and warmth of community service by the people of Pickens County. From our council members to our public servants, to our first responders, to the staff here at City Hall. We thank you for their efforts and for their work and for a year that has seen tremendous progress across the city. From our second Saturdays to our art walks, just a lot of things has been taking place to help the enjoyment of life here in our county. Lord, we ask your continued blessings upon us as we serve our community, remembering those that are not as fortunate as many of us, especially during this season of Christmas. May we continue to have open hearts and open minds as we care for folks during this holy season. May your light shine in us that we walk as better people through our belief and faith in Jesus Christ. Give us your peace and grace in all that we're about. And everybody say.
Last hour, Mayor, from Tim Kirkpatrick, if you would please.
My allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, you have in front of you our agenda of entertaining motion at this time that you adopt the agenda as presented.
Sure.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion by council. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And our agenda is adopted. Counsel, also present in front of you is our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion that we adopt our consent agenda as had been presented.
Motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion by council of the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries. Occasionally, we have special times when we have to give recognition to someone who has done something in our city and something that benefits all of us. So at this time, I'm going to ask counsel, if you will, step down from the dials and come around to the floor. We're going to do a presentation to Ms. Angela Rhinehart, Angela, would you step forward? And obviously, we kept that front burner going.
She wouldn't show up.
My face is going to turn red.
You need to pay the center of attention.
It's very scary, isn't it?
Especially up here in the face.
In recognition of Angela Rhinehart and Pickens County Arts Alliance, a special thanking for your partnership with the City of Jasper, our downtown development authority, and the creation of Art Walk Jasper this day of December the 3rd, 2022.
We all are crazy.
Thank you all, thank you.
Come on, I got a sleeve on me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
First of all, surprise.
Thank you.
See, wasn't that fun? I thought it should be fun.
At this time, we'd also like to recognize Travis Connell. And I'm going to ask our city manager, Sonia James, if you will bring this to us. Counsel, we have about three wonderful recognitions here. We're going to go down after the last one and have a picture-taking session with them either individually or however our city manager tells them. So if you will, Sonia.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. You've made a concerted effort to invest in the education and training of the city's workforce, and true to form, our force has grown to the occasion. Tonight, we have the honor of recognizing Travis Connell with our Water Utilities Department for his recent licensure as a Class III water operator. Travis has been with the city since February 2022 and comes to us with a wealth of water and wastewater and stormwater utility line experience. Since joining Team Jasper, Travis has been working towards earning his operator's license on the waterside and will soon start on the wastewater licensing process in order to have the dual certifications that our operators all will have. The licensing process is no easy feat, and we are very pleased to have Travis as a part of our team. And I would like for you to join me in congratulating him on this amazing achievement.
Continuing. Would you want to do this or do you want chair?
Chief Chair would be the next to do the next presentation.
Chief Chair.
Yes.
If you would please come forward for a life-saving ceremony.
Good evening, Mayor Council. On October 4th, 2022, we were dispatched to a cardiac arrest in the back parking lot of the courthouse. That was information we were given. We arrived on scene and were not able to find anyone immediately. Fortunately, our crews persisted and located the patient. We did find a patient in cardiac arrest. Unfortunately for us and the patient, our crews were able to immediately jump into action and perform life-saving intervention and were able to save that person. Fortunately, she is at home and doing well, and we're very happy for that. This is a culmination of a lot of teamwork and effort. We're here to recognize individuals for their work as a team, and that's what we are at the City Jasper Fire Department, we all work together. And we're going to bring them up one by one and recognize them as a group. First one's going to be, I'll read the citation here. Life-saving award presented to firefighter Dustin Lovell in recognition of your performance on the scene of medical emergency where your efforts resulted in the patient's life being saved on October 4th, 2022. Your actions exemplify the professionalism and performance standards of the City Jasper Fire Department.
We're going to get after the ones.
Firefighter, there we go. Firefighter Jason Long. Sergeant David Wadsworth. Lieutenant Christopher Butler. And last but certainly not least, he did not know and he just opened this and saw his name, says the chief, follow it ahead of him. All right. What John didn't tell y'all, Chief Chair didn't tell you, is he was part of this too. But he didn't take any recognition, but he was a vital part in this as well, everybody. Thanks, son. All right, go ahead, seat, we'll move on. We're going to go into penning ceremony.
And please don't go too far because we want your pictures with City Council here just a moment.
All right, the next part we have is a penning ceremony. We have several promotions recently, and you'll recall in October meeting, y'all approved sergeant positions, and we filled those positions. And we also had one lieutenant promotion during that course of time as well. So we're going to bring them up one by one and pin them with their new rank.
Mayor, I'm back.
Lord.
To the fire crew, I want to thank you. You know who the individual was and you know a little bit about them. Happens to be a personal friend of mine's mom. That individual is a mother, a sister and a grandmother. And so that family went through a lot of days not known, but because of you guys, she's okay. So thank you. Okay, Chief, sorry.
That's all right. First, we're going to bring up, we'll bring up David Wadsworth. Sergeant Wadsworth is serving on C shift, and we have his mom and his girlfriend here to put a pin on there, pin his collar brass on.
Don't stand in too close.
Just the collar, just the collar. Sergeant Jordan Burden. And Jordan will ask us to pin him, so. We'll try and poke. We're good with this. And I want one last firefighter I'd like to recognize. He's been recognized once, but he has done a phenomenal job all year, and that's our firefighter of the year, John Jones. We can get y'all to come back up for pictures.
Let's take this in order of presenting.
I got one more. I did our sergeants, but I didn't do our lieutenant. Lieutenant, please go. No way, buddy. I did my crystal, it's coming to pin. Now we get about the pictures, sorry.
Let's have a picture with Travis first, and then we'll.
Okay, you're in charge of pictures, so.
Travis, come on up. Counsel, Mayor, come on down. Travis, you can go on down and then.
Next, sir. Thank you, Travis. All right, well, the life-saving word first, then we'll do our lieutenant promotion. Get y'all in a row.
Hooker, if you stand right in front of me, I'll be getting.
She's like that. Can you kind of stagger so council can see in between the gaps?
Stand up, John.
Okay, everybody's done with that? All right, let's do the pin.
Good job.
Appreciate y'all.
Dr. Burden, if you'll come.
Okay. I want one, John.
Yep, y'all good. Perfect. Thank you all.
Oh, sorry. Let's get Farfar Jones, we want to get a picture of this as well. Come on, Sergeant. That's a.
Thank you.
Mom, you get the door, please. Okay, under new business. Item number one, consideration approval of resolution number 2022-15 for the 2022 budget amendments. Lindsay, come forward.
So in your packets, you'll find some of the 2022 budget amendments that I was recommending. Mainly, these increases are, we're going to increase general revenue, and we're going to reduce PV expenses, and we're going to increase the street department due to the Janet Drive project, which we're waiting on reimbursement from GMA for that. We're also going to increase our water revenue and reduce our meter reading, water pollution control plant and water supply expenses, and that's mainly due to a decrease in personnel. So it affected our salaries and benefits and stuff and all of them. This is what we have at the time, we'll have some more after the first few monitors.
This is today's. Counsel, I entertain a motion to approve resolution 2022-15 for the 2022 budget amendments.
Sure.
Motion in a second, any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, sign, the motion carries. Item number two, consideration approval of resolution 2022-16, adoption of the 2023 budget. And Lindsay, back up against this, thank you, Ms. Williams.
So as y'all recall, on November 7th, y'all presented with a proposed 2023 operating and capital budget. And at that time, we held our public hearing, which we didn't have a response from. So tonight, I'm just asking for approval to adopt the 2023 operating and capital budget of the City of Jasper as it was presented.
Thank you, Counsel. I entertain a motion to approve resolution 2022-16 and adopt the 2023 budget.
Sure.
Motion in a second, further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, sign. Thank you to staff for all the work that went into this budget. Item number three, consideration approval of 2023 calendar. We'll ask our city manager, Sonia James, to bring this to us.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. The future is in our sights, and we are excited to go ahead and be planning that process. You have the calendar in front of you, it's color-coordinated based on meetings, holidays, municipal court, our DDA and authority and committee meetings. We are proposing to add three additional holidays this year in accordance with our state holiday calendar so that we can be closed on the same days that their holiday schedule is. And these proposed holidays are also closed for banks and other local government authorities. And so we are proposing that City Council consider closing those three dates as well. That is for Juneteenth, which is the June 19th holiday, President's Day, which is February the 20th, and Columbus Day, which is October the 9th. So we are just proposing these, if City Council will please consider adding those so that staff can be off the same days as the state employees are and other local government regional employees are.
What's the total holidays that gives them?
I think it is.
That's okay, I can't even, but I'm.
I think it's 12. I think it's 12.
Okay, the reason I was asking, because I thought they were April 11th, so add them. But maybe.
Is this taking away what we used to have as a floating holiday?
Ah, yeah, okay.
And it's 13.
I think that's.
It's 13 days.
Because I was thinking that's what they had.
Take it to 16, but it's still, it'd just be 15.
Well, we're reducing the floating holiday and we're making it an official holiday in accordance with the state calendar.
So they don't have 13. Because I was thinking we were.
13.
13.
We were, it's 11 now floating holiday, we're going to take the floating holiday and add three.
Counsel, I entertain a motion for consideration approval of the 2023 calendar to include three additional holidays, Juneteenth, President's Day and Columbus Day, and we will subtract the floating holiday.
Motion to approve is present. Chair.
Motion in a second, any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. We have a new calendar.
Thank you.
Item four, consideration approval of the appointment of Mary Gordon to the Pickens County Board of Health. I did contact Ms. Gordon, she has a great to serve. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Mary Gordon.
So the.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Item five, is consideration approval of flock cameras. And we'll ask Chief Doc to bring this to us.
Good evening, Mayor Council. We discussed it in the Public Safety Committee about flock cameras. And long ago, Pickens County has, I think, 11 or 13 out in the county right now. And these campers, essentially, they read every license plate that comes in front of them or goes by it, and if the license plate were to be wanted, stolen, expired, however you, whatever. If we have a stolen vehicle or missing person, they have a description of the vehicle, so put it into the system. It can have a bumper sticker on the back, and every car that matches that description, it will send out a notice to the officers that have it on their phone or on the computer. And then they can go to that location. Just recently, we had a burglary of about $15,000 worth of air conditioning units, and the flock system from the Pickens County Sheriff's Office helped us show where it went, and then plus some people out in the community, and we were able to recover the majority of the air conditioning units, so we were cited and arrested. So that was really nice. So we were asking to purchase two of these. I think during the committee, I put a quote in front of them for six, and we knocked it down to two, and that is $10,700 for two. It's $2,500 per camera, $350 setup fee, one-time setup fee, and then a $2,500 annual cost for each camera. And that lot handles all the maintenance, they take care of the permits for DOT if need be. There's really nothing other than we just use our equipment, and I think it's a great thing for the city.
Counsel, this was brought to our attention about a year ago, and since that time, it has proven itself by several different instances inside our county, and I think this is a great thing for us to do as a city. So I entertain a motion at this time that we approve the life purchasing and installing of these two flock cameras.
Sure.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion by council?
Chief, how many did you say the county has?
Right now, they have 11. They have, they're slotted for 13, they have 11 of them. Anything on a state route, we'll have to get permanent for us, it'll take us a little bit longer. And we already have two locations set for them, we're going to put them up.
It is, am I remembering correctly, technology funds used for this purchase?
Furthermore, it allows us access to the software that allows us nationwide searches.
Nationwide, so anything comes from Alabama or California to about.
So as we come on the system with these two, then we're into the entire flock system.
Yes.
And I think that's a great thing for us. Any further discussion by council?
This did pass through committee and was recommended.
Passed through committee. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Both same. Item six, consideration approval of auditor engagement fee. Lindsay Williams, tell us how it looked, and what it cost to us.
Thank you, Fairdick. So it's going to be that time of year again where we're going to start working on the audit. And so the auditors have been in contact with us, and they presented their fees this year, and they had to go up, about like everything else. So their fees for the year, for the 2022 audit will be $29,000. This isn't an increase from 2021 in the amount of 3,000 to 750. So I was just asking, Counsel, if you would please approve these fees for Rush Gaming Company to continue providing auditing services for the city.
I'll make the motion.
Motion to approve the additional auditor engagement fee. Is second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion by council?
Just.
How many years have we used Rush?
I've looked back. We've used them for several years, which they did change. I guess they have partners, so they changed the partners because we'd been with them for a couple of years so that we had different people overseeing and approving the final process, so.
Thank you.
But I can get back at you on the number of years.
Sonya, do we have any policy or does there any law that limits the number of years we may use them for two broader years now?
There are all the.
And again, it was, the partner within the group was changed, I believe, three years ago. And that gives some comfort, I hope, that a different set of eyes looking at it.
Well, the urban legends that we inherit are hard to dispel. And when I first came on board, there was a lot of concern about changing. I'm talking about the city of changing every so often. I think some of us carried that attitude, but I'm glad to hear it's actually, in a lot of ways, coming from the professionals, better to keep the same firm rather than a change.
Yes, in my opinion, they're better suited to see any type of activity that is different from year to year. And rest assured, they are staking their names on these audits. So they would never compromise their ethics to let something slide by. So I'm very comfortable in keeping an auditing firm for longer than a matter of a couple of years. Because when you bring a new auditing firm in, they have to relearn your entire process. So it would be easier for them to miss something than the tried and true auditors who have gauged your activity from year to year to notice nuances that could happen. And I'm a firm believer in audits, and I believe auditors should be welcomed at any turn, and we can open up our books at any time. Because I, rest assured, this finance, they don't let anything under the radar. They are very zeroed in on all the activities that are helping, that are happening under the city ceiling.
I think historically, there was efforts to politicize the auditing process internally. And I will share that this firm was very open and outreach, members of the council to engage them in the process privately. And been very, very pleased with the relationship, so.
Yes.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion by council or city manager? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same. And, thank you so much. Committee reports, development committee, council members, per record, and the same.
I think the only thing that I would say, taking care of that, Mr. Speaker. We do have some interviews coming up for our leadership in that department. And I have reviewed those applications, and here and again, it's amazing the caliber of people that we are having that have reached out that want to work in our city. So looking forward to having that person, or having a person come on board and then reinstating our committee meetings and the process that we've been working so hard on over the last years. So thank you.
Kirk?
None in front of me.
Street and Parks Committee, Anne Snaby and John Fass.
Still working on with the design of the parks. Hopefully, we'll have things to be a great for until y'all first of the year. Also, too, we're relooking at the blighted ordinance, updating that, and hopefully we'll be able to bring it to you in January. But on a whole, I mean, the city's been very busy. It's been a very busy year. And I will say thank you to everybody in the streets and the parks for doing a mighty fine job. They really do care. They really do a good job.
Thank you, John. Dan?
The weather has delayed some of the pavement of the trail over, that we were going to replace on the temporary gravel path of the duck pond. Also, the engineer is finalizing the design for the stormwater project. And this will correct the drainage flow issues near Steel and Mary Street.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Administration Committee, Jim Looney and Anne Snaby.
Thank you for approval of the budget that had gone through committee. Again, I want to thank staff for the hours and hours and hours that goes into preparation of a budget. The budget amendments, I can almost guarantee there'll be more in a few weeks when the auditors come in. That's just normal, and we'll have to look at those again. But I do appreciate the work that goes into a 2023 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Looney.
Don't make anything through. That's good.
Water wastewater committee, Dr. Proctor and John Fass.
Let me print my notes, make sure that I can cover everything that I want to see. Well, these are really the agenda from our wastewater committee meeting. So we had a meeting on the 30th. The USDA project continues to make progress. Very exciting to approach the construction of that project. Still a few things to accomplish, but carrying on in good order. We have received a revised consent order from the state with respect to what our obligations are in order to complete that. Turnip Seed's currently working on that, and hopefully we'll have something soon. That includes, but is not necessarily inclusive of the underground injection control program, meaning the mine. So there is some question about whether that's part of the consent order or will be completely separate. We applied for it in short order, got a withdrawal, a temporary withdrawal permit. We were in jeopardy of violating some of our ordinances or our state laws as necessary to, when you're taking surface water. Kim did a great job of reaching out to the EPD and with all this immediate turnaround for a temporary variance to allow us to draw more than technically we could. We still are evaluating the well drilling process, waiting for costs of those. David's report, our water source, we can continue to try to have as many different sources as we possibly can. The mine water levels as of last week actually up a little bit, or unaccounted for numbers. In other words, what we build versus what we collect is really, it's up just a little bit. And we attribute that to the AMI meter program with some of the losses there. The other things are minor operational things, with the exception of, we'd like to make special note of the, we're very close to making the improvements on our system to maximize the Cherokee County agreement that we recently signed. And again, I mentioned AMI that continues to go fairly well. And the Willie Tank man, they've gone that project, I don't know how far along they are, but there were some delays over contractual issue and miscommunication, I think, but that process is underway. And I believe that's all I have. Let me make one sort of comment, Mayor, if I may. I reached out to staff after our meeting the other day. I've been to a lot of meetings in my life, and I've been in some bad meetings and I've been in some good meetings. And I commend Sonya and her staff for the quality of our meetings. It's not just recently, it's been getting better and better. But the amount of efficiency and the information that's passed along, quality of David's report, all of those things are really at a very, very high level right now. I want to make sure that I tell the staff that and counsel that publicly.
Thank you, Dr. Park.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, would we, Coach, perhaps, the other, Jim Looney?
From the committee, we are still looking at options for renovations over to our existing fire station. We have pivoted from the original plans. We have some other ideas. We met on-site, which was a phenomenal idea. So in addition to renovations of the current station, we're also looking at options and location possibilities for a second station to better serve our community. Thank you, council, for approving the flock cameras. That was a nice step in the right direction, I believe. We're going to see the benefit of that fairly quickly. And once we do, I look forward to expanding that program here at our city limits. Body cameras are on our officers, computers are in cars. So technology-wise, we have stepped into the future. We are finally there, and we're headed in the right direction. The fleet changes for both departments are still being looked at. We have a couple of fleet changes that we're adapting to based on needs, which is wonderful that we have that ability. Finance, city manager, they've done a great job of working with both the chiefs and the assistant chiefs to make sure that we stay on top of the needs. Then the parade that was yesterday was phenomenal. A lot of folks, a lot of comments today on social media and partial phone calls and texts was that that's the best parade they have seen in many years. So they were very thankful to have that event in our city.
Great. Mr. Looney?
Nothing additional on public safety.
And I have on here the Pro Park Committee, Jim Looney and Dr. Sonja Proctor. So I'll ask for an update on that at this time.
Right now, the architectural firm is aiming for a December 15th date. And that is pretty important to us. If it doesn't, we don't get a preliminary application in by the 15th, then I think we wait another 30 days, 45 days.
April.
April.
Okay, 90 days. So looking forward to hearing from them in the next week or so.
Nothing?
Nothing to add other than, Kim, have we heard back? Anything on the bathroom project?
I got no response, so I will follow up with them again.
You were reading my line, because I was going to reach out. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Last report, we're waiting on construction, Dr. Park.
It's not part of committee reports, but I would like to recognize the Downtown Development Authority, the Jasper Merksons Association, Public Safety folks, for all of the events we had in the last few months. Friday, Saturday events, the parade, we've already talked about it, but I thought the parade was phenomenal. And it's nice to see that many people downtown, even if it is cold.
Wasn't that cold?
No, at least it wasn't raining.
Good, thank you. I intend a motion at this time, Counsel, that we enter into executive session to discuss legal, real estate, and personnel. Second.
Second.